Again.
Thank you. There we go. Good evening, I'm now calling the Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. Time is seven oh four P M. Please note that in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine fifty-three E three. This meeting is being held by teleconference only. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you've called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comments for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considered video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Spreen.
Here.
Vice President Sherlock.
Present.
Okay. Commissioner B C G. And Commissioner Tonka. Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
And we have five of seven commissioners present with the form. And for the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants, and staff roll call. So we have, I guess, I'm sorry. Susanna, your Kirk call, what is your official title, because we were expecting Chief Glass?
Good evening, my name is Suwana Gertgau, and my official title is Acting Assistant Fire Chief for the County Fire Department.
Great, thank you so much, and you were here. Strategic Plan Consultant Scott.
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Gluham.
Present.
Operations Manager Barnett. Dave, I think you might be on mute. Thank you. General Manager Logan.
Present.
Lead Deputy County Council Chelliden.
Present.
Search Program Analyst B B.
Present.
Fire Safe Council Managing Director Rendler.
Present.
Okay, and presenters, consultants, and staff are all accounted for.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll move on to item two, Commission President's remarks. Just a couple of quick things. First, if I misread anything, or if I'm staring strangely at the screen, I don't know if you can tell from my picture, I have two big black eyeballs because I, my eyes were dilated earlier, so I'm everything around the side is still kind of fuzzy, so I'm trying to read as accurately as possible. Annual eye exam. Couple of things quickly. This month was a bit of a first for me. You know, as a council member for the town, I got pretty used to responding to the press about any items. This was the first time I've ever been called by a reporter about an item for this council, this fire district. Back on March ninth, there was an article, the Palo Alto Daily Post, about the county approval of the water tender purchase. And it's a nice article. I, several members of the public came to me later and referred to it, so it must got a pretty good circulation. Have to say it was a little scary being called by a reporter asking a lot of detailed questions about the water tender questions I was not fully prepared to answer, but I appreciate the reporter did not make me look as, he made me look good, I will say, for the, for the questions that he asked me. And it was also a first time, by the way, I think I've ever been quoted right directly alongside Supervisor Joe Semidion, so I felt quite honored by that article, but I think it was nice to get some really good distribution of the news about water tender and for people to hear about the fact that we're bringing assets to the entire region. Second thing was, it was also an honor for me to attend, you know, here's something about this later, the most recent CERT graduation just last weekend at Town Hall. And as always, this is the most exciting thing for me to go see, and especially because there's still so many teens involved in the CERT program. And that just is so entertaining to go there and see teens and adults working side by side on these, on all the programs. It's just so much energy around that, so I want to, you know, thank Victoria for really putting that together, and that program is just amazing. I'll also mention that it was the first time for me there that they were, I was, as a Los Altos Hills representative, that's the first time I was outnumbered by council members from Los Altos. We had two Los Altos council members attending there, which really brought up a really nice collaborative feel to that meeting, and I just thought it was wonderful. It was also the first chance for me to meet our battalion chief at our, from our station, so a great event, and I hope everyone will get a chance sometime this year to sort of, to see what goes on in those things. Finally, I understand the, our first newsletter has been emailed out when, now on March tenth, so I hope everyone will be looking for that if you haven't seen it already, and I will hear a little more about that a little later on. Those are the things I just wanted to call out for the front, for people, anyone who's listening in or watching this on recording, that a lot of positive things going on for us, and thank anyone for watching this meeting. Okay, let's move on to item three, public comments. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. Let's see, do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? I'm not seeing any hands up.
No, I do not see any.
Very well, hearing none, we will move on to item four, the consent calendar. Let's see. Are there any comments from staff on the consent items before we discuss them?
Yes, I would just like to mention, this is General Manager Logan, I would like to mention that items four H is an agreement for goat grazing services, and we'll keep the commission, town, Persman Hills Water District and the community updated once we receive the call that the grazing goats are coming. That tends to be quite a look forward to kind of event for the, the community. And then on item four dot I, please note that we have a new cover sheet on amendments to agreements that include either a link to prior documents pertaining to that, that document, or the prior documents are referenced. And thank you, no further comments on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission on any of these items, or the commissioners like to make any changes to the consent calendar or the order of tonight's agenda? No comments, I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording.
Orin moves to adopt the consent calendar as is.
On the second.
Did clerk get who got came in for a second?
Um, I, it was a tie, but I think.
Age before beauty.
That's our tie breaking rule, okay.
And I always lose.
We will have Melvin be the second.
The item's open for discussion, is there any discussion in the commissioners? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item, or any of the items on the consent calendar?
Um, yes, we have a comment from Alan.
Okay. Alan, can we proceed? Alan, can't hear you yet.
Yeah, you're muted.
Thank you. I just have a question about one of the items on the financial statement. We're about two thirds through the year, and the budget calls for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on fire protection hand crews. I asked this question earlier in the year. I'm just curious as to, are there any plans to hire any fire protection hand crews? We're getting closer to the fire season, and I was just wondering what actions are going to be taken with regards to that budgeted line item, thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. I'm sure this one we're going to answer right immediately here. Let me get back with staff on that, and we'll come back next month, let's, we'll get an answer to you for that. Any other comments on the consent items? Okay. Seeing none, if there's no further discussion, we will now vote, District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spreen.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Fisher Warren.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Thank you. We will now move on to item five, the Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. Let's see. See, I was gonna say, item five A is the monthly report, and five B is the Palo Alto Station Eight update, acting Fire Chief Glass, or who's gonna, who's gonna provide that?
Chief Gertgau. Acting Assistant Fire Chief Gertgau.
Great, thank you, if you'd, if you'd go ahead and provide that report.
Okay, I'm not sure how Chief Glass provides this report, I know this is sent to the clerk for the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Again, this is a report for February of two thousand twenty-two. There were no significant events that occurred in the District of Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Here, let me know if there's any problems looking at the data, let me actually zoom in a little bit. We have eighty-two calls for the month, or I'm sorry, sixty-two calls for the month. Everything is pretty much in alignment of how they normally fall, these are your code three calls over here in the left column. Engine seventy-one responded for one call firsthand for four minutes and thirty-one seconds, which means that, that they must have been on a move up to the district. Sometimes due to training or other items that rescue seventy-four or trucks seventy-four are committed to will do a move up. The rest of the units are part of the district, and the averages look pretty much in alignment compared to previous months. There was one dollar, one incident that created a dollar loss, and that was actually at the El Monte Station, we had a little bit of a electrical issue in one of the outlets, which caused us to create an incident and then have somebody come out and do some work on it, I believe. Hopefully Chief Glass was able to notify the district of that incident, and we fixed it, and Remy did it almost immediately the very next day. There were eleven programs in the district, two hundred and forty-eight attendees, twenty-four staff hours. And then, as far as the incident snapshot, that's, that's the data for February twenty twenty-two. With the map as it lays out based on the spread of the calls or the, the distribution of the calls based on February twenty-two's data points. So is, are there any questions or clarifications needed for the report out? Okay. And then, as far as the Station Eight, so there was a meeting that Chief Blackshire, Chief Glass, myself, and Chief McNally was on with our Ops Chief Flarski. I think that occurred about two weeks ago. The contract for Station Eight will be executed as written. The meeting with those parties basically conferred and confirmed all of the details in that contract with Palo Alto beginning to take Station Eight staffing in June, and then August, and then October, and then with County Fire taking Station Eight staffing in terms of County Fire crews, which will occur in July, September, and if needed, in November. After fire season is over, the Administration and Planning Division, or myself, we will compile a full summary report for all of the months that the Station Eight was staffed, inclusive somewhat similar to your public safety report, not as many necessarily graphics, but we'll do something that basically shows call type, volume, commit times, response times, and distribution on a, on a G I S map to show you where the calls landed for the Station Eight incidents. Other than that, that's what I have in terms of the summary of Station Eight staffing, any questions? End of report.
Thank you very much, any discussion from commissioners? Any, any public comments or questions? I see a.
Alan has a question. Alan, you're on mute.
Thank you. The map shows six fires, I'm curious as to what the nature of the six fires were that were reported, thank you.
Six fires, are we looking at the dots, let me go back up here. Yeah, one second here. Let me go back to my spreadsheet here. Alan, if you just bear with me, if everybody can just bear with me for one second here. There were six incidents in which they were coded as fires, they may not have been fully fires. A lot of times when we get the response as pot on the stove, that, that becomes an end for his one hundred series call. There may not have been any dollar loss for that, so let me look real quick here. And your dollar loss only was that one incident, let me go back. And then, let me look, I'm just looking at my, my data here real quick. Instant narrative. Okay. Is there a way for me to quickly look up? It'll take me about five minutes to look up on my sheet here what type of calls, and then I can come back, is that possible for the commissioners?
Yeah, that'd be fine, I don't know if his question was a, a deep one, so I don't, if there's nothing unusual about them. But if you want to, well, let's go ahead and tie item six, and we'll come back if there's anything interesting you can find from those. Thank you. Let's see, item six will be receiving the General Manager Report, but item six A through six D are the reports, and General Manager Logan, would you please present those reports?
Yes, thank you, I certainly will. Sharing my screen now. Can you see my screen, or am I on full view here?
We can see it.
It's good.
Very good. All right, thank you, well, this has been a great month because the water tender is such an important part of the safety that we bring to the community, so wanted to definitely highlight that on the opening slide, and then the newsletter, very, very proud of that activity that is going on, and we'll speak about that in this, in this PowerPoint. And just our whole social media outreach, again, very important part of, of our program. So moving on to updates, events, and activities, two that I would want to point out, and what the water tender being the most important, and that is a link to the press release that was published by Supervisor Semidion's office. And then the second is, the staff made a presentation to the Los Altos Hills Club. And thank you to Chief Kirkout and Chief Glass for being there and also helping with that presentation, because I think what we saw, Chief, I was so pleased with it, was the wonderful synergy between the fire department and the fire district, and the department being the suppression and the, the emergency medical services, and then the, the district being all those preventative programs that we have, so hopefully the engines don't get the call or the ring to come. And I think we did a really great job putting that together for the community and for those members, and there's a link here for anyone from the public who would like to see that, that presentation, so just wanted to make the opportunity, and I'm glad you're here, Chief Kirkout, and thank you for that. Moving on to a very important initiative that is occurring from the Commissioner's office, that's Ricardo Lara, and the Commissioner and the district started talking two years ago. Yajeniya Rendler was on that meeting with Commissioner Lara and myself, when we talked about, let's find a way of incenting our residents to do the right thing with vegetation mitigation, and the district doing the right thing to reduce the risk of wildfire and have that translate into benefit to the community and to the residents who hold insurance products with, for homeowners insurance and fire protection insurance. So that is occurring, the hearings are going to take place on April thirteenth at one P M, there's a link to that. The information about the hearing is quite voluminous, and I had been asked to do a quick summary of a paragraph of what all that meant. And I refrained from doing so, because whenever you take legislative information and try to reduce it down to a few pages, it really doesn't work too well, so I would invite the community to read the information on that link, attend the meeting at one P M, it's a Zoom meeting on April thirteenth, and hear from a state perspective what's going on with insurance rates, how reduction of risk is going to affect those rates, and the, the analysis that goes into putting the, the premiums together. Moving on to our need for district I T, we reached out to both of the providers who responded to the R F P, and we're now investigating other potential vendors. We were able to compile a list, and with the time that we need to go through that list, we'll be coming back to the commission and hopefully make some, some progress in finding perhaps a better suited list of vendors for the district. And then, want to talk about the weed abatement letters, this is coming out from the deputy fire marshals, or from the Office of the Fire Marshal, and we have three letters that come out every year. And those are the general letters to the unincorporated, and one is for homes that qualify for the thirty feet of defensible space, and the other for the hundred feet of dispensable space. And then the bulk of the letters go to the town of Los Altos Hills resident, and that has to do with the town's ordinance for thirty feet of defensible space. So copies of those letters are in your packet, I invite you to take a look at them. They are similar to the letters that have gone out in years past, but it is an annual activity, and that connects into the district's weed abatement program that we handle through the county weed abatement office. And the next slide is from the communications team, talking about, we're going to have an ad published in the Living in Los Altos, Los Altos Hills and Mountain View Magazine, and staff is working with commission partners to amplify all of our social media, you received some emails from us, so we're trying to amplify all of our messages. And then we'd like to talk about the quarterly newsletter that was just released on March eleventh, and that's our first newsletter. And I'll lean a little bit over to Commissioner Sherlock. Commissioner, could you give us an overview of what you think is important about this newsletter?
Sure, thanks, Jay, let me make sure I'm off mute. Yes, you are. You're great, thanks. So we've taken a while to get this newsletter together, we wanted to find a way to put a quarterly newsletter out that was of meaning, but also simple enough and easy enough to access information that residents would actually put it into action. So in each newsletter, we aim to put out information that is great, of great value to them, and something that helps them do something in preparation for wildfire. In addition, taking classes, right, and other educational needs, but one of our challenges right now is getting it out there, and we did find that it was sent out to everyone, and a lot of, it went into a lot of spam folders, so we're working on that right now to figure out what we have to do to make it bypass whatever recognition the different computers have to make sure it actually goes into inboxes. It did go to all commissioners, and hopefully you received it, and if not, please check your spam folder, you'll be getting it again once we've worked this out. But I think it's really important for our residents to know that we're here, that we're working all the time, there are things they can do even in the off season to get ready for wildfires, so that's really why we're trying to get this out. Welcome your feedback once you've taken a read, thank you. And thank you, thank you to Jackson and to all the staff that worked on this, because it took, it's harder to simplify than it is to make something complex, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, so thank you to you, Commissioner Sherlock, for heading up our communications team that meets weekly, and we've just gotten a lot of projects out, and we really appreciate the thoroughness of our communication approach now to the community, so many thanks to you.
Actually, can I say one last thing about social media, Jay? All of you should have also received an email last time from Andrea when she wanted to push out some information, and I really welcome you to give that a try, she puts in links where you can just click on them and you can amplify through your own network. If you have any problem with that, or you want to do it differently, please reach out to either one of the staff members or to me, and we can fix it.
Thanks. Perfect, thank you. President Spreen, that's the end of the General Manager's report, thank you.
Thank you very much, General Manager, thank you Joan as well. Is there any discussion or questions from the commission? Seeing none. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing, hearing none. I guess we will now move on to the district reports. Let's see, item eight is to receive reports.
From, skip item number seven.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's see. Receiving information.
Can I?
Yes.
This is Phil with Persman Hills Water District.
Yes, sir.
I had an embarrassing time getting on a Zoom meeting here this evening.
I did too, so you're.
I just jumped in here, my wife helped me. Anyhow, I'm not sure exactly where, where we are on the agenda.
We're just starting item seven, which is the, really receiving information about our, the Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Study. We already had, if you have something you'd like to talk about, I think that would probably be can either return to sort of non-agendized comments, or maybe towards the end, like I said, I could ask Chris Chelliden.
Okay, no, I don't want to slow down the agenda, I will, I will hang tight, and if, if I can get three minutes at some point, I, I will wait patiently, I'm, I'm very sorry.
No problem, let's, let's go ahead.
Chairperson, it may be, it may make sense for Mr. Witt to just comment on the, on the received General Manager's report.
Right.
Which is item six that we just finished. I'm guessing that might be relevant to the General Manager, General Manager's report.
That's a great idea, so Phil, why don't you go ahead and comment, add a comment to the General Manager's report, which is just finished, since your readings have been with the General Manager, this would be a good time for that.
Very good, all right, great. So I'm here because we've talked about these leak sensors on your assets, which we've discussed in the past. Jay and I have had very good conversations, you know, as far as, you know, how to move this ball forward. She has, you know, some, some good, some good requests, however, some of the things that she's asking for, I can't commit to, which is scope, timeframes, budgets, these types of things, because we're, we're a little tight on, on, on materials these days, as maybe you guys are familiar with. So I can't, I can't give her the you know, the, the request that she's, she's asking for, and, and she's asking for them for a good reason, because she's trying to you know, provide information to the county supervisors, which I think we all know. Anyhow. So I need to get an agreement together with Los Altos Hills County Fire District, as well as Persman Hills Water District, to move forward with the grant money with Valley Water, who's, who's providing the money to help us kind of get this teed off. Originally, a few years back, we, we had talked about doing a pilot program, the pilot programs kind of, kind of out the, out the door anymore, we, we have enough information now where we can kind of, we can move forward pretty fast. I think that's about all I wanted to say, but I would like to hear from the council that maybe we can push this forward, and I, I just need an agreement with the district and the water district.
Thank you. It's obviously not an agendized item we can do this evening here as a forum, but it's a great report, I know that General Manager and Mr. Witt will be working together to try and move that forward, I think we're, we're both on the same, both have the same end goals to make this happen, and it's just a process of making all the steps come together. Any comment from General Manager Logan, again, this is not an agendized item, so we don't want to have a back and forth on it, but I think it was a good report to let people know where this item stands.
Think that we just continue our discussion and see what we can do to push an agreement forward if that's possible, and I'll work with County Council to do that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving to item seven, which is receiving the information pertaining to the Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Study. General Manager Logan, please present this item.
Yes, thank you, just to, to comment that the Santa Clara County Comprehensive Fire Study is now underway, and I did receive some forms And I did receive some forms uh that um the fire department sent to me to kind of put me on awareness that there is a lot of information that's going to be collected. Now, the information was was previously collected through the LAFCO study. And so I'll be working to get that information ready. And certainly, we have an ad hoc subcommittee that was appointed to assist with that. And if need be, I'll bring that committee uh back in, back to the attention of the forms that we're going to put together. So I just wanted to put that information forward. I don't have much more information uh other than that. And I don't know if um County Fire and Chief Kirkow, if you have any information you'd want to provide on this this topic. The status of the of the fire study.
So for Santa Clara County Fire, we submitted our information primarily because early because uh it was helpful being an accredited agency. We got our uh profile back, our draft profile back. We just submitted on Friday of last week our edits. Um preliminarily, um Jay, I just want to advise, I am very pleased with the work that they did. They took a lot of their their data and the way they represented the uh whole totality, the the um aggregate data was was pretty spot on, very accurate. So I'm hopeful that um the group that is working on this um independent independent study will be able to turn around accurate uh and comprehensive work that accurately reflects uh both districts.
It means a lot to me. Thank you for saying that, Chief. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Uh is there any discussion from the commission on this item? I'm seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Okay, great. Uh we'll now move on to the district reports. Operations, Emergency Services, and SERP. That will be item eight.
President Spring, it looked like Chief Kirkow had gotten back on the screen. Maybe you want to go back to item five and see if there's any updated information on that item.
That would be great. If you'd like to present the information on the uh the fire information that was requested by the public. No problem, and you are still muted, by the way.
I just had to get to my screen. Hold on a second. I did look up uh the information, so um again, uh on, I was able to find on, uh looks like I'm going through here. Let me make my screen a little bit bigger. Um I was about to put it in the comment section uh for everybody, but I think this will work as well. So on February seventeenth, on Thursday, we had a call in which units went out for a smoke scare. Um and again, it comes in, somebody smells smoke or there's an odor of smoke. So we dispatched the entire risk of whatever that is that day, whether it's a vegetation or a structure fire. And that was coded as a six fifty one for a smoke scare. On uh Saturday, the twenty first of February, that was the building fire. That was the uh station. Again, it was an electrical outlet, but it is coded as a one eleven, which is a building fire. Um on February sixteenth, on Monday, we had a call for uh again, it was smoke that ended up being from a barbecue or tar kettle. That's the six fifty three call. Um on Saturday, the twelfth of, excuse me, the sixteenth of February, February, we had a call that was coded as six fifty two steam vapor fog or dust thought to be smoke. Again, these are the investigative things that the units go out and find and determine that it's not a fire, and then units get canceled subsequently after the first in unit is able to make that donation. And then on Thursday, the twentieth of February, um there was a call in which there were again, five units dispatched for something that was determined to be a chimney or flu fire confined confined to the chimney. Um and then we um alarm response that was uh deemed to be. So those are the calls uh that were coded.
Thank you very much. That's and that's certainly more detailed than we normally go into. So I appreciate you being able to sort of pull it up so quickly. That's wonderful. Okay, we'll move on to item eight. Item eight A is to receive the operations and the integrated hazardous fuel reduction program reports and provide direction to staff on various district projects. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott, please introduce this item.
Thank you, President Spring, and good evening, Commissioners, Chief Kirkow, staff, and members of the public. In this agenda item eight, staff will present information on the district's integrated hazardous fuel reduction programs and discuss in some detail the district's largest project on Interstate two eighty, which is in the beginning phases. The district is applying for FEMA grant. The amount will be based on the final scoping, but will be in the millions of dollars to fund hardening of the I two eighty and adjacent properties. This I two eighty project is a huge project. It far exceeds what the district could do on its own. It partners the district with FEMA and other statewide organizations, including CAL OES and Caltrans. It provides high visibility to the community and opportunity for education. It is clearly aligned with the district's strategic plan and mission of protection and education of the community. And it complements work completed and in process with the hardening of evacuation routes around the district, including the north part of the district along Page Mill Road, the southern part of the district along Loyola, Mora, and um the community fuel break, which is on the western side of the district. Item eight and later agenda items will ask the commission for approval to move forward with two key elements of the grant process and support additional staffing resources. Um and just to step back for a moment, we see the expertise of district staff is leading to many ideas which create new projects. However, the district is not yet able to scale to meet the demands of the work. On the one hand is lots of good ideas, and on the other is a small committed group with knowledge and expertise to execute projects. The gap in the middle is how ideas transform into shovel-ready projects or maybe masticator-ready projects. We are filling that gap as we proceed with this new I two eighty project. Operations Manager Dave Burnett will speak to that project in a moment. Um but each new day, information must be obtained and compiled for the grant application process funding the I two eighty work. Staff is using GIS drone technology to evaluate the project area area, researching methods of vegetation handling once it's removed, conducting cost benefit analysis for various project options, and navigating environmental regulations. The commission can assist through its policy role of allocation of staff, resources, and budget. The commission also considers the strategic plan when making decisions. And in a few months, the commission will be asked to review and ultimately adopt a new successor strategic plan for uh starting in twenty twenty three. So with that context and overview, you can consider the coming ask for two new worker resources and commission approval on two topics within the grant application process. And uh to proceed with this item, staff will alternate on review of the slides in your packet, starting with this slide that's up here for item eight, and I will turn it over to Emergency Services Manager Denise Cluhann.
Thank you, Marcy, and good evening, Commissioners, staff, um plenty of fire representatives and our Safe Council represents in public. Thank you for this opportunity. Yeah, a lot of very um ambitious projects. Um the I two eighty will be uh covered in the next couple of slides. Operations Manager Barnett will discuss that. Uh for uh ultimate update, the evacu- evacuation route hardening um project. We're um in a a process of looking at CETA CEQA notification exemptions. Um Eugenia Rendler uh from Santa Clara Fire Safe Council, Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council is assisting with that so that we can work on, because we have so many various projects. We want to make sure that we're able to be a lead agency when necessary. So we're looking at all of our projects because that it's more than just doing evacuation route hardening. So we're looking where we sit with all that, especially with the I two eighty and some of the other fire roads and things like that. So we're looking at all of those. Um additionally, uh we'd like to get that project started. It's a little bit off on timeline. We were hoping to finish it first quarter. Uh we've done a little bit of extra uh staff time in it, so we're looking at April or May. For the next item, number three, I'm going to hand that over to Eugenia Rendler from Fire Safe Council to discuss the Hidden Villa Property Assessment that's happened recently, the report on that. Um and again, what these are one of the items why we are looking into CEQA um as as some of our responsibilities around that. So if I can have Eugenia step on and uh talk to item three and actually item four also. Um those two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Um the Hidden Villa Property Assessment, the uh report was actually uh sent out to Hidden Villa, the board, their board on Friday. So that consists of very large H I Z, if you will. They have ten structures out there, and each one was analyzed for the defensible space and the home hardening uh elements that are in our standard H I Z that we use from the NFPA. It was a thirty-something page report with lots of photos and recommendations. And I have a meeting with their board to help them prioritize the recommendations and talk about how they want to roll out things. They have a quarter-by-quarter plan they're hoping to um implement, and they want to start, you know, before their summer, their summer camp starts to get the first layer done. So I look forward to meeting with them and help together. And like Denise mentioned, there may or there may not be some sequel consequences there depending on what they decide to do to do first. And your next item, number four, the proposed H I Z zone, Helping Business Zone and Rebate Program. The goal here is to provide a hybrid H I Z model for the public to use. Great. We use an in-person um service right now, and as you have heard through the last year, year and a half, COVID interrupts it, people aren't comfortable, there's some scheduling. And some people are knowledgeable enough that they could start to answer some of these questions on their own. So the hybrid program, we're looking at two products, two different companies that offer um online interview, if you will, that you put in your address, you answer uh different types of questions, and they use the CAL FIRE Fine Scale Mapping, um fuels moisture reports, prevailing weather and wind reports. And they can return uh risk analysis to the individual based on their property. And this is really exciting for people who either don't want or don't need the traditional in-person. It gives a lot more people access to this, and it's not as impacted by you know, the ups and downs of COVID and sheltering a place and and things like that. Ultimately, um we have two companies we're looking at, and we're examining their underlying data and assumptions. And then from there, we want to vet those two companies by actually having a boots-on-the-ground product for each one of them so that we can compare and contrast what services would be offered to your residents. And then moving into the concept of a rebate program, the rebate items would be driven by the H I Z, so you would have you know, trained people making the recommendations that your residents may be eligible for rebates. The idea is it incentivizes and lowers the entry level cost. Sometimes the hurdle for people is to get this giant list of all these things they have to do, and it's thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, and they don't do anything. You get this inertia that happens with the public when it seems overwhelming. So by making clear prior incentivizing that entry level cost, you get more participation. And then it's easier in several subsequent years to do the maintenance that that needs to be done. So that's the idea behind the rebate is to increase participation and help people with that initial heavy lift so that they can continue the maintenance on their own. So the H I Z would outline things that need done in the vegetation management. And after you've finalized your program and your percentages and things like that, they would show that they did the work and then apply for the whatever rebates you guys have finalized. End of report.
Thank you, Eugenia. So I'm going to go ahead and pick up for item five um in your agenda packet and on um uh discussion this evening, uh we have the annual return of the goats to the burn preserve. Um again, as in past years, there's a a identified area on a map that they graze in. They are, they do stay out of sensitive areas that have been identified in past years and are requested this year. In addition, um Victoria and uh Town Staff, Parks and Rec Department have arranged some interesting uh visits with the goats with staff. Um so coffee with the goats, walk with the goat uh type of activities. So that'll be nice to get out and discuss kind of in a different form of vegetation management, not your typical uh, you know, weed eaters and chainsaws and things like that. It's more of a environmentally uh friendly uh way to to work on some of those hazardous fuels, and they're not uh bothered by the poison oak that we had out of some of the evacuation route hardening projects. A lot of the workers uh had some poison oak issues along with myself. So it's a great way to to work on some of that area and burn preserve. And then the final slide will speak for itself. It's it's just a graphic of the um, I'm sorry, number six is the um quarterly report that will be presented next month, so that'll be coming your way. So I'm going to have uh Victoria run to the next slide, and Operations Manager Burnett will give a little update on the two eighty hazardous fuel reduction program process that he's in on the grants.
Thank you, Denise, and uh thank you, uh Commissioners and public and um all attendants. Um yeah, I think Eugenia said it very well in terms of like a heavy lift for the H I Z. So what we have here is um is similar in that FEMA and CAL OES are helping us with a heavy lift of the additional work that's required for this five-and-a-half-mile stretch of I two eighty. Uh our plan is to remove hazardous vegetation, uh which will likely expose trash and is also uh can be considered hazardous fuel. The hazardous vegetation, it will include hazardous trees, uh trimming trees, uh pruning, um where it helps thin out uh from the potential of ember cast. Um we'll also look to thin tree stands and brush stands um uh to help uh prevent uh high-intensity fuel spreads as well as ember cast downwind. Uh will reduce ladder fuels, which will uh prevent uh ground fires from escalating into the canopy of the trees, which exponentially threat um increases the threat downwind and uh exponentially increases the fire spread rate. Um we're also, the project scope, uh while it extends from Page Mill all the way down to Permanent Decree on both sides and includes the center divide. It will also include parallel um uh evacuation roads like Atastodaro, uh Eastbrook, also intersections that go through uh major ones of uh at the off-ramps of El Monte, Magdalena, Page Mill, the commuter uh parking lot as a staging area, um roads that intersect uh and go underneath uh two eighty will be part of that and considered that continuous kind of right-of-way passage as a continuous line. And then those participating uh private parcels that are but have included in the scope and will go a hundred feet off the roadway with up to two hundred to three hundred feet, uh depending on topography and fuels. So um uh we're, well, this initial uh heavy lift will be followed by our planned is a ten-year maintenance plan with a three, three-year cycles and a final tenth year of um uh plant, you know, ongoing maintenance. So um that's the the project scope in a in a nutshell, that additional uh heavy lift. And then the process, we you know, we were approved uh for the NOI, our last commission meeting, we it was pending. So since that last meeting, we have been approved to move to the sub-application phase. And uh we are uh one sub-applicant of many in California that submit through CAL OES as the FEMA applicant uh as the FEMA applicant, CAL OES would receive the funds and distribute that to us to manage if our grant was approved. Um we may uh after April eighth receive a request for information from CAL OES uh before it goes uh six months after April eighth to FEMA uh for the uh, you know, submission. And then during that process, FEMA had me have further questions, and then we can expect approximately twelve months after uh CAL OES submits uh for a final approval. And then that is when we can start work on the project. So that's the process. Next slide. Uh Marcy uh discussed a lot of the benefits that we have. Um we, as a team, are learning a ton working with CAL OES uh who uh was coordinating from FEMA. Uh we're working with County OES, uh the GIS that we're doing, we're 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 learning with Caltrans. So this is a, you know, a a massive project that has a a lot of um a potential for for us to uh develop our skill sets, to work regionally, to work with the state, uh and then also in skill sets such as uh grant writing, GIS, project scoping, um and and just dealing with all the logistics to make this happen. So before we can get those chainsaws and the hand crews out there, there's just a a lot of development that needs to be done, given uh what we're doing and the impacts of so many um stakeholders involved. Uh there will be a heavy There will be a heavy community outreach and education component to this project as we will reach out to the residents, include the residents and seek for them that are abutting to participate with the right of entries as we do with other evacuation road projects. And we will work with county fire and we already are starting to help, you know, make sure that the staging areas for both their responding agency as well as public safety in case of a disaster are properly hardened. You know, this will be a significant fuel reduction line that control of the fire will be made easier and require less crews because it's done. There is data that's coming out from the USDA about how fire on the other side, when it crosses the road, is less damaging, even if it does crossing. So that science is, is developing even as we speak. And so the actions needed tonight, as, as Marcy described, is the two letters that the commission approves future district financial contribution and commitment to maintain project area. And I'll turn it over from here to Eugenia for the secret discussion. Unless there's questions from commissioner screen or anybody else, because this is the centerpiece right now.
Just so people understand, we're going to have an item eight B, which discusses those letters specifically. Anyone's welcome to come in with any questions, but do you want to have Eugenia speak as well? And then we'll take more questions at the end of that.
Next slide, Victoria, please.
You're muted, Eugenia.
Okay, here we go. Take two. Welcome everyone again. The Altamont evacuation road project dovetails into the Moody Almonte project that was recently completed. So that is perfect connectivity, something we always aim for whenever we're doing fuel breaks and evacuation. This one, we will be filing a notice of exemption with the county. It saves you a lot of time rather than going to the state clearinghouse. We're still hoping to get that done within six to eight weeks. So you'll be able to start in April or May. The Hidden Villa, like I mentioned, will be meeting with the board and determining what they want to do. And that'll put, that'll decide what the sequel requirements are for what their actions and their mitigation will, will let us know whether they've triggered sequel compliance. And I'm going to correct the final bullet point. It's actually a project specific analysis. And this is under a new program called CAL V T P. And what CAL FIRE and the state did approximately twenty eighteen is they put together a sequel analysis basically for the entire state of California, if you meet one of the categories in the CAL V T P. So it's almost like a giant pre-approval. And then what happens is you apply for a P S A, your project specific analysis. And it, it streamlines, the whole, the goal is if you're already in the things that are pre-approved, it streamlines your project. And what I proposed when I was talking with Dave about maps and, and the other district staff is that potentially these projects could be all swept together under a P S A. So that's something that I'm looking into with our consultant that specializes in the CAL V T P. So that would save upfront, it would be time consuming because we're putting together a very large area. But then going forward on your five year and your ten year plan and all your maintenance plans, you would already have your sequel compliant documents in place. So time heavy upfront, but, you know, saving months and weeks worth of the cycle in the work over the next ten years.
Thank you, Eugenia. Victoria, can we have the last slide? So this just covers what we just did in a timeline graph. You can see where we're in in March. If you look down the column, it extends out through twenty twenty-three, although the project with I two eighty could be up to three years. So we might be leaving, actually looking out into a twenty twenty-three. But this kind of gives you an overview of where we're at. It was just what you saw on the slides. It's just a little more condensed on this timeline. So I'm going to turn it back over. Thank you for all the presenters, Eugenia and Dave assisting with that. Marcy for, for queuing us up and getting us started and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Is there any discussion or questions from any commissioners? I'd really like to make a statement that I hope you recognize the scale of what's being, being taken on here. And for me, it's pretty exciting to recognize that what started out is a really a vision of addressing some fuel reduction on the scale of the entire district. Look how complex and large scale this effort becomes when we really get into it. And as an organization, we weren't prepared to do this until now. In fact, what we're learning is look how much more we need in terms of growing our expertise and our abilities to make this happen. This is really, it's exciting, but also it's a huge amount of work that we're having to grow ourselves to tackle something this large. When you consider a stretch five and a half miles long, both sides plus median, it's just incredible. And we're now learning about how to do sequo analysis of this. The fact that we're using some, some really innovative technologies, using drones to measure how much fuel we're actually going after. There is a lot here. So for anyone who thinks, I know it started with kind of a, hey, can we clean up two eighty? I want people to recognize what a complicated and collaborative effort this has to be to make something like this happen. This is not something that someone just go in and do. This really requires major amounts of effort. And I really appreciate that staff is just figuring out what we have to do and they're making it happen. So that's really what the message I want to leave everyone with. Any other questions or comments on that from any commissioners? Okay. Any other comments from the public on this? I see a hand up. Yes, I see a hand up. Alan? There you go.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to comment because there's A D A and A B and so forth, but I'll make my comment now. I guess with regards to the work plan, I would have appreciated seeing something, some follow-up with regards to the mid pen regional open space fuel break. The discussion that took place with regards to procurement of a masticator and the status of the C W P P update plans. With regards to item eight B, and as I said, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk now, but I'll just make my comment. I noticed that the ten year maintenance plan is estimated to cost a half a million dollars per year. And that's going to be funded entirely by the, by the fire district. My questions are twofold there. One is this property, it's going to be cleaned up as largely Caltrans property. I don't understand why they're not responsible for properly maintaining their property. And secondarily, if it costs three million dollars to clean up fifty years worth of not doing what they should have done, I can't understand why it takes five hundred thousand dollars every year for ten years to maintain it. I know the Fire Safe Council did a, I don't know if it's a comparable project, but did a large project along Highway seventeen. They might have some better ideas to what the annual maintenance cost would be. But in any event, it would seem to me that Caltrans should certainly pay for a substantial portion of the cost of maintaining it. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments. Well, I think in terms of reports on other projects, those will come in the preceding months when activities happening there. Certainly, our focus has been on this one because of both deadlines and the incredible amount of expertise we've had to gain in the past few weeks alone to, to keep this project going and growing. It's also nice that we, we're working more with Fire Safe Council and have that expertise on what these things should cost and how these things work. So I think that's proceeding very well. Any other comments? Let's move on to eight B, which is to
We have George as a question.
Oh, please, please.
I'm sorry to interrupt your flow, Roger. I just, I just thought, gosh, Roger, you're really putting it out there and doing a nice job. And I just wanted to say in terms of comments on the earlier part that I appreciated your, your nice some enthusiastic summary of what we've been up to.
Thank you so much. Nice to have a hand up there. Okay, let's move on. Item eight B, which is certainly related. This is the approval of required funding commitments to include in the sub application for the CAL O E S FEMA grant. Let's see, strategic planning consultant Scott, I think you're going to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Screen. Actually, I will pass the baton to the general manager and she will walk through this item for the commissioners and next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcy. Item eight B commissioners is to approve required funding commitments to include in the CAL O E S and the FEMA sub application. And you'll find in your packet a memorandum report that was very thoroughly put together, thoughtfully presented after a lot of research as to what these two commitment letters were to include. So I just refer you to that memorandum report and I'll just mention some of the highlights in it. And the first approval we need, which is under B, Roman numeral two, is to approve funding that is twenty-five percent match that is required to submit the grant sub application. And we are not sure what the grant amount is going to be requested. That's coming in almost daily as we speak through the month of March as we're doing the vegetation assessment. But we're looking at somewhere between six to ten million dollars. And so the twenty-five percent would be that portion of whatever the final number is that we're going to turn in to CAL O E S and FEMA. And then secondly, as a requirement, the commission needs to approve funding for it for, and we're selecting a ten year maintenance allocation or vegetation management of the I two eighty grant project corridor to sustain the project. And I think that makes a lot of sense because if the federal government's going to put, let's say, six or eight million dollars in, they don't want to see a year or two later that that's all overgrown. And Caltrans obligation is to do what it's doing right now. And when you drive up and down two eighty, you see what Caltrans is obligated to do. And that is to mow the edge of the roadway and to pick up branches that are laying on the ground. That is it. That's all they're obligated to do. So what this grant does is it goes deeper into the vegetation management by removing all the kinds of things that Dave has talked about in his couple of slides, all of the kinds of things we did along Moody Almonte Road, Page Mill Road, and that we'll do in Altamont. It's the big H I Z. And that is not going to be done by any other agency. And so we are beautifully situated, nicely situated and funded by taxpayers' dollars to do that kind of vegetation removal and to make that corridor safe for all the reasons we talked about. So the maintenance program is just part of what our strategic plan talks about as we would do on Moody Almonte Road, as we do on Page Mill, as we'll do on Altamont. We go back and we make sure that all those efforts don't just go for naught and that there is a good subsistent management plan to go with it. Now, what that, the cost of that management plan, that will start coming, I think, more into focus for us as we get through these next couple of weeks. And we have meetings set up with Caltrans and that will help us understand that also. And then the fourth item is to designate the general manager as the responsible representative who signs the letters and the letters are auto-generated. They're in the platform for CAL O E S. We'll receive those letters once we fill in the, the proper of sections of the form. And that provides confirmation, these, these letters will provide, will confirm the approvals under eight B two and eight B three above, committing the district to the twenty-five percent matching fund and the maintenance funding responsibility. And we'll keep the commission updated on that. And let me just summarize from the memo, a couple of points. The letter of commitment communicates to FEMA and CAL O E S at this initial stage that the district will participate through in-kind and financial contribution in order to complete this important project. Authorization to allocate those funds will occur later. By providing a twenty-five percent grant to qualify for the seventy-five percent grant amount, the district is leveraging its public tax dollars to gain a greater amount that will be expended to improve public safety along a vital interstate corridor. Commissions, residents and the public recognize the importance of removing hazardous vegetation along I two eighty for public safety. And commissioners, you, I, staff hear this all the time from our residents. When is someone going to get in there and take care of this and do it on the public's behalf? So I think that we are the sounding board for those kinds of concerns from our community. And then to summarize, the maintenance letter demonstrates a commitment by the commission to manage and fund the ongoing maintenance of the project area following completion of the project. All of these commitments get put into what's called a B C A, benefit cost analysis. And through that software program, if we don't show at least a positive benefit cost analysis by the dollars that the federal government is giving us, our grant does not go forward. And so by understanding our financial commitment and what we're saying we're going to do, it helps us then achieve that analysis through the B C A that I hope will be, you know, very compelling to FEMA. We've gotten excellent comments back from CAL O E S, from our notice of interest, the N O I that was turned in. And we're finding excitement, enthusiasm with all of the partner agencies we talked to, be it Caltrans, be it county, O E S, all of them are very, very encouraged by what we're doing for this important corridor. And the corridor is not just transportation, it's also going to serve as a fire break. And we know that if we can have the proper vegetation management in this area, that if that fire comes through from whatever source, being a car burning on the side, which, you know, last year I watched the, the pulse point come in on car fires on the side of two eighty in this corridor. Then we're going to know that we've got, that the firefighters, the suppression personnel are going to have a much, much better way of containing that fire. So with that, I would like to recommend approval by the commission for items eight two and items eight, three and eight, four, which is approving the twenty-five percent match, the maintenance and designating the general manager as the responsible representative who can look at the letters once they are auto-generated. Thank you, President Spring. That's the end of my report on, on eight B.
Thank you, General Manager. Any questions or comments from the commission? Not seeing any. I will comment quickly that this is clearly a strategic item that we're responsible for. And if we can succeed in this, this is a three to one multiplier for our taxpayers' dollars to attack a huge project that we couldn't do on our own. So I'm quite excited about this. I'm also really impressed. I want to say again that our staff has in no time become experts in very large, significant grant writing processes, which we had no experience in this before. So this is, the way this has ramped up is really impressive. I would now entertain a motion. Will any commissioners care to make a motion and second this motion for approval of these letters?
Or moves to approve the letters?
Sherlock seconds.
Great, thank you. The slide is open for discussion. Any discussion from the commission? I see. See the public's getting ahead of us. Any commission discussion? Seeing none. I see there's some public comment. Let's move to public comment. Alan?
You're on mute.
Thank you.
There you go.
I'm, I have two comments. I'm curious that the commission turned in an N O I that said the total activity cost would be three million dollars. I, I now hear that the project is going to be a six to ten million dollar project. I guess I would be interested in understanding whether or not the, when you turn in an N O I for three million dollars, you can do a sub application for six to ten million dollars. My second question goes back to the requirement for the maintenance. Since there is no match with regards to the maintenance, what is the requirement in terms of the commitment as far as the dollars that need to be committed? I'm not suggesting that, I get, I guess I'm suggesting is, is that the, obviously the commission would be responsible for doing the work. But since it doesn't know how much the work is going to cost or what work is going to be required, why should it be obligated to put in this or commit itself to a specific amount? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I think the scoping work is still proceeding and we're learning more as we go, which is why the numbers have been refined as we go forward. And I think that the, in terms of whether you can submit an N O I and then how the sub application changes, I think you're seeing that playing out right now. It's the answer to that. I think you're seeing that playing out right now. The answer to that would be yes, you can. And I think the general manager answered the question already about the maintenance aspects of things. Any other public comments? I see a commissioner comment. Commissioner Tyson?
You know, I don't mean to be argumentative. It's just, I have had experience working with Caltrans before and, and I can tell you it's very difficult to get a response in any kind of timeframe. And so if we're sitting here and we see a clear danger in the middle of our city at that, and we have the power and the desire and the skills and the means to address that, rather than sit here and whimper about how Caltrans can't get stuff done, I think we should take action and that's our responsibility. And so I, I would just say, I hear these comments and I just don't see it that way at all. I think it's our responsibility to take charge of our safety. And we have, as I say, the means and the will, and that's, and I intend to execute those. That's my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments in the public? Seeing none. I think we can, no further discussion. We can now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spring.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
All right, thank you. We can now move on to the next item, receiving information from the general manager for procurement of services of a grant writer. This is like item eight V, item five. General Manager Logan, please present this item.
Yes, thank you, President Spring. To provide support for the Cal OES FEMA grant, I was able to speak with a grant writer who would be available to us to assist the grant team with more detailed expertise needed for the grant application. And this, this would be an independent contractor consulting services agreement and would happen over the next few months under the GM authority for procurement of services. I'll be returning with the agreement once it's signed and the deal is put together at the commission meeting in April. The agreement is, is reviewed and approved as to form and legality by county council. So I have been working with county council on this and I'm very pleased at this short notice and short time to come up with a very expert grant writer to help us. We're doing great. We're in there and just kudos to the whole team. But all the help on the bench is even more important to put the polish on this grant application and be very, very serious about our commitment. So thank you for this opportunity and I just wanted, this is an information only, no action is needed. But that's my plan to move forward with securing services of a grant writer for a few months to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager. Any discussion with the commission on that? I didn't think so. Any, any public comment on that item? Seeing none, we will move on to the cert activities, item eight C.
There's a hand, a hand raised.
Alan did get there. You got there in time, Alan. Okay, great. Go ahead.
My understanding is that the application is due on April 8th. So it would seem to me you're going to have a grant writer, grant matter has to start immediately in order to get it done by April 8th. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. That's true.
Roger, you're.
I just got caught on mute, sorry. General Analyst Bebe, please present the update on cert activities.
Thank you, President Spring. And good evening to you all. Look at this present mode here. So our current cert projects, and I just want to point out, thank you very much to staff who's been working on all of these huge projects. You know, for, for us in cert, it's just great to see, you know, for momentum and that just makes us want to to get some of our projects done quicker when we see all this great momentum going. So shout out to, to our staff. Our current projects haven't changed much because they're sort of long. I'll skip the GAS mapping because I'm going to have a special presenter kind of show you a little demo of what we've been working on. We're still planning our spring drill. The, the cert group is taking it upon themselves to to figure out how that, that drill is going to run. We've got quite a few cert supervisor volunteers that have created presentations and whatnot. So I'll be happy to report that out after our drill is over. And you know, the GAS mapping is turning into us wanting to improve how we report damage assessment, track our volunteers who go out. So the J S mapping project has really kind of pushed us into an environment where we're going to start to have a task force of, they call themselves the, the geek squad, but they like to do these really cool technical things. They've done a great job with J S mapping and now they want to do another task force group to look at some different digital platforms we can use to track even trainings, activities. And then after disaster, our disaster response and damage assessment. So I'm really happy to announce we're going to be starting that here shortly. We continue to work with our firewise communities and trying to get settled mountain recognized. Still working on our, I think our application, our report committee reassessment is done now. And we're working on just firming up some things and hopefully have that in the next month or so. Our alert SEC competition has not progressed as well as we hoped. But we hope to continue this. There are some plans in place kind of in the background at this point. But still need to get together with Mayor Tyson on, on that one. As far as our community education, I think that Commissioner Spring did allude to I'm coming to our event. Thank you so much for being there. I'm going to show you a quick picture here. And so I just want to say thank you to several people that, that need to be mentioned here. We had asked supervisor submitting to attend. He was not able to, but he very nicely provided some commendations to all of our participants. You know, that's such a thrill for a teenage, you know, person and even an adult to have, you know, these don't come very often to get commendations from a, from a board of supervisors, supervisor. So they were very thrilled. So we took this great picture. I'll be starting off kind of, kind of the back row left to, left to right there. We have our engines, I'm sorry, Rescue 74 crew that came. The, the captain's Captain Maxim. Next to him is the battalion chief Kemble. I just want to point out that it's so great to have such good role models at these events. And these events create the opportunity for more resources for the teen certs. I can happily announce out of that, we have three teenage cert girls who are attending a fire camp that was recommended by battalion chief Kemble. That'll be the next couple of weeks. And also she's offered to have any of the kids come and talk to her about the fire service. We had a couple of people that really, teen certs in general, that really wanted to be more involved. So that was great. You guys recognize that distinguished gentleman next to Battalion Chief Kemble, which is our, our district president, Roger Spring. Next to him is the mayor of Los Altos, Anita, and, and I'm going to mess this up, and, and Ninder. And next to her is another one of the Rescue 74 crew. And then we also had councilwoman member from Los Altos, Nisa Flagger, who has come to actually all of the cert graduations that we've, that we've had. And she's really into it. In fact, I got an email. Her son would like to join teen cert. So you know, these events just really stimulate, you know, other, other people coming and other members to come join our program. So I really, really appreciate the help from, you know, our esteemed Captain Gluen was there. And we also have Anne Hepinstall from the city of Los Altos. So just a great event. We, you know, we all really, you know, found it together. I also want to say thank you to some of our cert leaders who have really stepped up to the plate for all of these academies. You know, technically, you know, we don't usually put on these adult academies very often. So we've really had to kind of get our instructor groups really trained up and ready to go. And I just want to, just to shout out to Dave Stewart, Steve Kellum, Eduardo Arias, Amira Sachdeva, Ed Bridgman, and some other cert volunteers that came out from our own Los Altos Hill cert. Not only did they come out, but we also had some Los Altos cert instructors come. Trevor Longbottom, Dr. Edward Yu, might sound familiar to some of you. Dr. Yu did a great job teaching how to splint. We had Sean Stinson from Campbell Cert, and then we had Hugo Penefiel from Mountain View Cert. You know, when we do these, it's just, it just bonds us as different cert groups coming together. Out of that, I've been asked to now teach for, for the Mountain View Cert program. They were lacking instructors. So you know, these things are just really perpetuating some great forward motion and just sharing of other cert programs and resources. Also want to point out immersion preparedness fair is still full go. We'll have a couple of surprises we're working on. There may or may not be a couple of goats to pet. There may or may not be a shakeout trailer that shows up that actually you can go into and sit and it simulates an earthquake. So we'll get some updates for that next month, but something that we're working on to try and really staz up this immersion prep fair. We're still doing the ongoing slap the ble classes in Los Altos. Our next one is March 31st. I am the exciting instructor. So if you have nothing to do on March 31st at night, come down to Los Altos Community Center and have some fun with, with our props. And it's pretty, pretty cool, easy class. It's only about an hour. You learn a lot of life-saving techniques and you have fun with your friends. So bringing some brands, you can have a barbecue afterwards and on the deck out there. So great event coming up. Also, I'd like to announce that our first event in the March activity guide that came out, March through August for the town is April 4th. We're going to have a coffee with the district. The sheriff's office already does this. And so we thought, you know, hey, maybe someone want to come talk to us. So you know, grab a cup of joe and join us. It's going to be a virtual presentation. And we look forward to seeing some of you there. Not on here, but a great update. We have had two tween preparedness people sign up. So our tween preparedness cert program that's going to be happening in June is, is rip roaring and ready to go. So very excited about that. I want to go back to the GAS mapping. I, we have a team, a project team of certs that have been working on GS mapping. Since Zone Haven has come out with new zones, we're kind of looking at how we can integrate the old cert zones into the new Zone Haven zones. And we have different layers that we're looking at to put onto an ARC JS system. You know, these goals and objectives of this group really, you know, will, will enhance our communications with the town, you know, where the town will be able to get a lot more information quickly from us. As I said before, this will kind of push us into improving some of our technology for disaster response. So I'm going to hand the, the floor over to Dave Stewart. He's going to do a really quick kind of show and tell for you guys. You can see kind of what they're working on. It's pretty phenomenal, phenomenon, phenomenal. Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Dave. You're on.
Okay, is my audio coming across good?
Yes, let me find my mouse to stop sharing. There we go. All right, you're on.
There we go. So everybody should be seeing a map at this point.
We do.
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to thank the fire district for enabling some of the cert volunteers to get in and work on these maps. It's been 2014 since the last time we did a significant map upgrade. A lot of our information was getting not just a little stale. But we had two or three things that we wanted to do. The first thing we wanted to do was to make sure we could map all of the certs and be able to tell which ones of the certs were ham-enabled and what their call signs were and where they were. The other thing that was important to us was to be able to identify the critical infrastructure in town. So here you can see, I assume you can see my mouse, but there's a bridge at El Monte. We didn't have a good icon for water tanks. So there's a glass of water there, stables, golf courses, and the fire station. All this has been updated in a way that allows us to separate out public information from private information so that for internal use, we will have addresses, phone numbers, cell phones available by clicking on some of these icons. But we will also be able to turn this out as public information only. For instance, you don't want to be putting out certs home cellphone numbers. So those were our first two projects and they seem to be pretty much along. We now have both the roster and the critical infrastructure available to us. The next project, which we're about halfway finished with, is to look at the Zone Haven evacuation zones and identify how we want to do surveys of these. You can see some of these zones up in the northern section are very small, very few houses. And then Zone 30 here is enormous. It has like three or 400 houses in it. So we have to next come to some understanding of how we're going to divide this up into survey zones. It will still be a the evacuation zone, the Zone Haven zone that it is, but for the purposes of surveying, we'll need to cut it in half or maybe thirds. In addition to this, Bruce Martin is working with West Wind Barn and the Horsemen's Association to update our large animal layer and also to put in sort of a emergency stables layer. There's a fair amount of unused stable infrastructure around town that we could use in an emergency, if nothing else, just to sort of shoe horses into places where we can then capture them. Another layer that we haven't started yet is the ECC, the Emergency Communications Committee, needs to be added to this. And the other thing that we're doing is we've wanted to have a grid over this for quite some time. So that when you say it's up at Arastodaro, you can now actually say, oh, it's up at where is Arastodaro 7538? And this is an XY grid, the US National Grid, very standard grid for us to be able to locate things. And then our other sort of future projects are, we need to be able to do printing. So we're working on that. We want to be able to do both large format maps so that you can see the entire town at once as well as smaller survey maps that people can carry around with them. And we have some other ideas that we're toying with and haven't quite come to agreement on how they're going to get done. But we'd like to map out the ham radio strength, the first net phone strengths. And Caltrans has asked us to do some surveys of some of the minor bridges along the creeks in town. So getting a good inventory of those is going to be another piece that will be coming. Any questions?
No, but it's really terrific. Thank you for working on this.
Amazing.
All right.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. So that's the end of our cert report. I just want to say thank you again to Dave Stewart for putting forth so much effort. I know the team has been working many hours getting these layers done. And this again, like I said, just enhances our response and emergency preparedness. And these are layers that can be shared with the town, you know, who desperately needs some, some updates to maps as well. So I'm really happy to report that and thank you very much.
Thank you, certain general analyst Bebe. And by the way, during that, I added two items to my personal calendar from your list of upcoming events. So thank you for that. Any public comment on this site or actually any commission, other commissioner items? I see we have a public comment item as well, but I don't see any commissioner discussion. So let's go to public come up comment, Alan.
Yes, thank you very much. My, my question is, is that the town has a hazard mitigation plan. And in the town's hazard mitigation plan is listed critical infrastructure and, and other types of important things. I'm just wondering, whose responsibility is it to get those things onto either the town's GIS system or this, this other GIS system? Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a good question. I suspect there's a shared responsibility for these and each group is using them for different reasons. And I'll, I'll be discussing this with Dave and others to make sure that all the information is being shared appropriately. Thank you.
Roger, you've muted again.
That's twice. Great. And that is what I was just saying to, in response to Alan was, I'll make sure I talk to Victoria and Dave and others. Make sure the information is being shared appropriately. I'm sure that each of us have our own reasons for using the information, both in a shared way and for unique ways as well. So I'll talk them about that. And I'm sure all the communication is going quite flowing in two directions quite well. Moving on to item nine, financial consultant and district clerk reports. District Clerk Vargas, please present this item.
Thank you, President Spring. And I'm just going to report to real quick, a reminder to commissioners, employees and applicable staff to file your Form 700 annual statements of economic interest. Those who are applicable to file should have already received the link on how to file that. There are 14 of you on this list and I'm happy to report that.
Um, there are fourteen of you on this list and I'm happy to report that uh ten of you have filed as of today. So there are just four more and I will send out um just a little reminder email again to those final four. It is due April first. That is a Friday. Uh, what about uh two and a half weeks away from now? And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Any discussion from the commission? Seeing none, any public comment on that? Seeing none. Great. Uh, let's move on to item ten, personnel. Item ten is the approval of a technical, technical analyst programs, planning and grants manager position description. And the authorization of the execution of an at-will employment agreement with Eugenia Rendler for said position. General Manager Logan, please introduce this item.
Uh, yes, thank you, President Spring. Uh, I would like to read aloud the details of the employment agreement uh with Eugenia Rendler. This agreement is, this agenda item is to discuss and take possible action to approve an at-will technical analyst program, programs, planning and grant manager employment agreement between the district and Eugenia Rendler. The proposed employment agreement is included in the District Board of Commissioners' agenda materials for this item. California Government Code Section five four nine five three subsection C subsection three requires the commission to orally report a summary of the proposed compensation before taking final action to adopt that compensation here by approving the employment agreement. Key components of the proposed compensation are described in detail in the proposed employment agreement, including the materials for this agenda item. In summary, the proposed at-will, full-time employment contract includes an effective work start date and compensation start date no later than July first of twenty twenty-two and includes the following compensation. One, wages. The proposed contract sets the technical analyst programs, planning and grants manager base salary at one seventy, one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which is equivalent to the base pay rate of approximately eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents per hour. Benefits. Under the proposed agreement, the position will receive certain benefits, including uh A, vacation accrual of twenty days per year with a maximum accrual at any one time of a hundred and sixty hours, which is twenty days. B, sick leave of twenty-four hours per year. C, a uniform allowance of up to nine hundred dollars during the first year of employment for specific items identified in the proposed employment contract. And D, a technology stipend of a hundred and twenty dollars per pay period equivalent to two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per year to cover cellphone, Wi-Fi plan, G I S mapping capabilities, office supplies to conduct district business. And three, the proposed employment agreement does not provide for holiday pay, does not provide medical benefits, does not provide retirement benefits. And so that is the, the details of the compensation and term of employment of the agreement. Let me move on now and talk about the memorandum report that is in your packet. And the recommendation before the commission tonight is to approve the technical analyst programs, planning and grants manager position description and authorize execution of an employment agreement between Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Eugenia Rendler. I'll review the memorandum report attached, which provides background and discussion for the recommendation to fill the position of the technical analyst programs, planning and grant manager position. The November ninth public meeting of the Commission Budget Subcommittee, the Subcommittee added the new position of Programs Management. The position description was expanded to include technical analyst responsibilities that will implement project management software and training of staff and calls out the planning component necessary for programs and the grant component to be, to be um utilized for competitive grant dollars. All of these functions fulfill the gaps identified for the district to keep pace with big projects that the commission and the staff desire. The position description was built. Now the person who can successfully fill the position is recommended. An employment agreement is recommended between the district and Eugenia Rendler. I feel most fortunate that the position description fits, fit is a position that Eugenia desires to hold. She has numerous options based on her broad range of skills and expertise in fire science, fire mitigation, and a track record of successful project implementation. As stated in the memorandum report, Ms. Rendler's background, education, training, advanced experiences, and knowledge of fire science, vegetation management, extensive grant writing and implementation, development and management of programs, projects, automated workflow, understanding of G I S systems, insurance industry experience, administration and organizational development make her an ideal person to fill the position and join the district team. Ms. Rendler's joining us as a district team colleague and member of the district will strengthen the district's ability to serve the community and sustain the rapid growth of programs, projects, and grant management opportunities that are currently underway and in the near future of the district. Commission approval of the position description and approval of the execution of the employment agreement between the district and Ms. Rendler are recommended. And thank you. Uh, no further comments, President Spring.
Thank you, General Manager. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Not seeing any. In that case, I would entertain a motion. And it will, the commissioner, please make an emotion. The commissioner, seconding the motion, please state your names. Who wants to race for the uh motion and second?
Thanks. We'll move. Warren seconds.
Thank you. The items open for discussion. Any discussion from commissioners on this? Commissioner Tyson?
Well, I just wanted to say that um, that I, I didn't know about this coming ahead of seeing this in the agenda. And so what I did was I picked up the phone and I talked to General Manager Logan, who explained to me. Really, I think the, this is a very opportunistic uh move to hire somebody who has the particular skills that we, we need. And also I have, I have to say, you know, um, we keep doing more and more. And, and as I said earlier with my comments, uh, I, I think we should and we can do more. And we just have to make sure that we've got the resources to enable this. We can draw up all the plans that we want, but to execute them. I know this myself from my own work. It takes, it takes a lot. You don't just dream up a, a request for proposal and execute a contract and have somebody start working. I, I know what's involved with all of that. And so I, I see our staff skills growing and becoming more resilient and less uh and able to do, to do more. I feel like they're stretched thin. And so that's why I was quick to make a, the move here. Um, and, and you know, and I'm not somebody to just throw staff at things. I don't know. Do you remember President Spring, when we first decided to hire uh a General Manager Logan? I said, well, you know, this is a new position. We haven't had this. Let's, let's go with the halftime role. And, and you said you thought it should be a full time. So I'm ready here to admit I have been wrong before. And so I try not to make the same mistake multiple times. And so that's why I'm coming down on the side of saying, let's, let's go ahead and do this and let's make our team stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Sherlock?
Thank you. Yeah, George, I totally second that. Um, I, I see how thin staff is stretched and I see what we have coming up over the next year to two years and it's immense. And I, I want to make sure we retain the staff we have and they need that kind of support. And Eugenia, I worked with her quite a bit back when um I was on her board. And um, I know what she can achieve and I know what we can count on her for. And there's, there's no training coming in uh for this role. She can hit the ground running and I think there's a great advantage to that. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
Yes, I also want to second what's been said. You know, it's, we, we face a challenge hiring people, uh, especially with, you know, the challenges of no office space yet. You know, only working environment. So I think it's very important that when we are able to find good people and they're willing to join our team, we need to move quickly and make this happen.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you so much. I'll add one small comment, which is that uh, you know, for those people who just look in the district and see the, the bullet list of items of things we're doing, they don't really get a sense of what I'm fortunate to do, which is to see the incredible expertise we have here in terms of fire science, expertise, project management, and it's just growing day by day. So I couldn't be prouder of the skills where we have and are adding to this team. So I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about this hire and it really just strengthens what is already a really remarkable team we have. So uh, thank you for those comments. Uh, is there any public comment on this item, on this motion? Seeing none. See no hands up. Great. Uh, if there's no, for discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please connect the roll call.
Since Spring.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Right. And the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I guess we now move on to item eleven. Uh, commission member reports. Uh, this is an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports on any or any future agenda topic. Any, any comments from the commission? Great. Thank you very much. Uh, I guess there's really no reason to have public comment on that item. So I will skip that. Um, we can now move on to item twelve, adjournment. Uh, this will conclude the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at eight forty-five P M. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Sir, General Analyst BB, please stop the recording.